Yeah, I just joined this one.
Well, thanks for coming again to try and meet this budget done. I relay our meetings a little bit this year simply because I thought we don't forget to document that we have that information to really move along quite quickly with our needs issues. So what I did is I just fell off most of the numbers I have now, pretty, pretty good numbers. The only, the only thing that I think that would be changing would be some insurance packages from every day. Work is long, property liability, auto insurance, those, those numbers I don't think we have quite yet. So as they change, I will identify them to you. Tonight, I just sort of broke down and tried to take care of what I call more redundant budgets that we generally get into. I think we're going to get into more discussion when we get to the fire department, not only the fire service, but their capital group accounting as well as public workers and their capital group, which we take. The budget, I can go over parts of the salary pieces. I can tell you that I built into the budget in 3.2% adjustment in wages. I chose that as I was looking at over the super price in the past, bunch of other things as well as there's a survey on, we have a bunch of managers, not only York County, but Commonwealth County, and they put together like 25 so communities that responded. And the average there, once I looked at all that they counted on the issue is 3.66. So I think we sorted in the ballpark at 3.2. There were some salaries that will be a little bit more, just because we got to do smart adjustments, I thought it'd be fine to get to them. But generally speaking, I think the boards were pretty generous last year as there was a plethora of activity then. Really, there were some changes in salaries and wages that happened quite, quite quickly, and I think you folks responded nicely to try to, try to move the gap, we need to fire the fire. So having said all that, the sort of the budget spreadsheet, the overall spreadsheet I put together right now is really just information. Some of it is very, very active, others, other bits was still keeping more adjustments. But the bottom line here is that the overall budget as presently presented is up 262,000, 262 dollars or four about seven of the time. This presentation here does not include the work that the public work, that the fire departments have been doing, in researching and putting at, the new fire engine, upper tanker, that the president went out and bid, see full bids on. And all that, that number is running 1.21. We have some strategies as to how to accomplish purchase of that crop in the future. As I understand it now, those crops, once you put an order in, you're looking at two meters, maybe three, people can see that, our annuals right now, which we ordered about two years ago, they're not telling us, they hit it this summer, it's about in the first of May, now it's summer, so achieving, people that have that, give you that in the next month or so. Having said all that, I provide to you tonight just the non fiscal budgets that I, that I really want to roll this over with, pretty, pretty easy, self explanatory. Obviously, the general government budgets, which are the board selection budget, the planning board's budget, the field board budget, the professional service budget, have not changed much. I know that the 1101, the selected budget, it's pretty much identical previous year. Simply required to call, there was a push by select work company, I had to change that all from previous year. So now we're back here. Any questions about 1101? I'll just move through to something new. 1102, the planning board budget. Again, it was slight adjustment on this budget, not have to do anything but dues from some majors in planning vision, went up from 1765. The town committee budget, or we call the fields budget, has been flat, committed for all the years that I've, and we haven't spent any money in, got any of it then. And do you know that, yes, we have, even though it doesn't relate to this directly, have a payment at 47% if I'm here in the next month or so. It makes sense, it's changed a bit, but not as much.
Ethan, that's successful. Don't you think there's going to be like 347 more going to follow or?
You mean, it's going to be a deal itself? Yeah, brother Chris, that's why we're going to be very detailed. I've read the payment request, and it's not, I mean, obviously, it's not solidified in any phrasing, but any payment theories that are leading by saying, you're looking at it, we can, you know. There's not like a proportion there, there are a lot of occasions that I thought one committee had considered that, but it is. If it did go through, this is, if we have a plethora of data, this is all based on land and front lines.
It was seriously quick and well revaluation sometime, it's a, this being the time to do it, trying to get everybody to hold off, pay on sufficient revaluation.
Well, yes, sir. Well, that's certainly a great point. You can't stop, file a payment, so that's their, that's their problem, they can file them. There's a process, they're usually feasible, they'll go to, they have to be creative, they know it's their ability, they know it. But we are still, we obviously can't. Update, adjustment, balance, it's open, developed. For a new calendar, something, but it's, that's what it is. I'm looking, right now, I'm just waiting for some numbers to come back, so we can put it together, set it back if you decide, I know that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I think there's a lot of people wouldn't go, wouldn't put up with the hassle of applying for, you know, the tax, but just if they know, if they know that it's a revaluation coming the next year or so, any.
John, that'll generate more payment requests than the singular one I can tell. That's what happens.
Really?
Yes.
And then with that, the absolute largest, is that people will see their new pattern that they proposed, and they'll know by insisting fact, and then they break down, we don't have a tag, that's, that's definitely not kidding, but that, obviously, that's. Seven. Jason?
Yeah. I've already factored that into my budget.
The, the only one that slightly needs to change, 1104 professional service budget, that we're figuring that in, adjusting in legal, people mind, they've gone up on their column rate, adjusted for 7%. I still have it in, I made it a slight adjustment to 37, see that we don't spend 4500 dollars in any, don't have any outstanding legal issues that have any, so still good, you know, part of that, I would consider that.
Well, we, it could be the one with the clear view, right? I mean, she's already spent some time there. That is an opportunity for some more legal.
Yeah, depends on, depends on how that process, there is that.
But we're still doing pretty good on electric lives.
Right, yeah. The lot number is gone slightly since the last year, the bad, bad elements, had it been, that was this year. The services, electric records, the good books that we're trying to get. By historically, in some side of that, perhaps, we'll try and get these books, these normal books, better sheets, and all these that, now we have a place where we can count. The, the rest of that, our vision services, CIA technology, or CAI technologies, go on our website, pick up, go on there, track, it's probably, put in your buttons, you can see the, we have some R on there, most times, hopefully.
It's pretty impressive, I use it, there's all kinds of layers that you can put on it.
Yeah, you can add more layers to it, just add that.
Actually, pretty nice.
So that, that really tells us, particularly for the 1103 budgets, it's up 120,900, 5,000 as of last month.
Big motion, we tentatively approve the 11 series.
Second.
Fortunately, the second, we tend to approve 1100s. All those are fair. Basically, we have the town hall administration budget, this really encompasses three budgets to be town hall operations, land use office, the assessor, code officer, planner, and the planning, the land use administration assistant. First would be the town hall administration budget. It's up slightly, we had to increase some of our building maintenance, including plant lawn care, lawn care's got a little bit. Other thing is that our computers and software, not quite sure what's going to be happening here, just received word from Red Dog or Rebel Ryan, and he's now playing out business with IP services, so we had an appointment with the company, I think, talking to us about IP support on Thursday. So that number may change, not quite sure yet, so, you know, keep, that's that. And again, like I said, some of these property insurance, property liability, those things may change as a few months, a few days.
So would that be the computers, software line? Is that the one you're going to talk to?
Yeah.
And is that, that number that like we had last year, 22,800, was that what we paid for those services or is that like a yearly?
Oh, we, um, there, there is a, there is this little bit of money we can spend monthly, the rest of it was, then it was over, 25,000 dollars, it was like we had last year. We had some, we had some computers that we had, we had a servant that went down, and it plays my computer, my client.
Can we cut that one there too, right?
Right, purchase that, maybe as well, stay there all.
Do you foresee having to purchase new computers this year?
We'll have a better idea once we talk to these folks, they're going to include assessment that we have, a lot of, through some aid, the representation.
So we'll definitely have to come back and revisit this one?
Yes. Next, next budget would be the land, the land office, primarily the next two land use, town administration, our whole solely on pointing that work for us. These were adjusted again by the 3.2, which then we also have longevity, 7 cents an hour that is providing to our employees, and it's all, have been here for. The other thing that we're seeing now, that we're getting a 4% on health benefits, it's split, we have the half of the year, we don't get a change in our premium until January 4th, we're not waiting for the budget, we may change.
Ethan, you going to provide us with a, a salary sheet like you've done in the past?
Yeah, I, I do that, okay, I can, but we'll have a complete breakdown, we'll have the fighter, we'll have the salary range, money for position, and all the benefit, the children, law enforcement, that.
Is, is our planner, has that changed? So do we, what do we have for contracts today? Is it like a multi-year contract?
Year, 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 year. Uh, next would be town hall administration budget, provides some salaries to the manager and clerk, and that will just another tax, like, and also add in part-time line, 6500 professional, so we give time to die. Since that's a premium. These three lines together, 1 million, 300, 1 million, 30,000, 50,000.
That, that 50 is just mainly all salaries, right?
Correct, yeah. Right now, I did a quick analysis, everything about 3, close to 3 million dollars in salary that is now, so the limited budget, it's almost 50%. It would be, no, it's interesting, when I first got here, it's like, we've been bringing slowly, bringing, going over the years, because of the toll, of the parking.
That's not unique to us.
Was that?
That's not unique to us.
No, unfortunately, because I think everybody's experience, yeah. Yeah, yeah, what, what generally happened, that, yeah, so, so folks that, that, overall, I'll extend, I will be, we had other folks that didn't know, I was, they had spent a little bit of the time. But I truly hope that, that we have, we'll say, just our tax, a lot of areas, just higher than the tax, or let it go.
Okay. She accepted it?
Yeah, she's accepted, uh, we're waiting for, she's supposed to be here on 29th, but early, big work line, right now, she's making, definitely how, work, time back, that will help, manage back, that, that, you know, she has some background on the back.
Did I totally zone out on your explanation on health insurance? Why did that go up 50?
Well, there's a, there's a much reason for that, it's up 40, 45%, but we also have employees now on the fight line, attending for, for, before we have employees that will be taking the pay off, for their insurance offer, now, now we have to, budget.
It's almost 40.
Yeah, 40,000, that's strong. While the next budget amounts on the, civil, third, a bit of convenience.
Big motion that we tentatively approve 1203, I mean, 1204, 1205.
1203, 1205.
We need to come back to 1203 for the computer stuff.
All right.
I want to do that, we still have the condition on some of these, I think, health insurance, we should mention that. A little premature.
I thought we were all set for the health insurance.
Health insurance, yeah, there's probably like 80, no, that insurance fact that.
Oh, okay, I, I missed that, I didn't realize that you.
We're responsible insurance, that maybe, but.
Okay, if we need to get more information, then I would, yeah, I thought we were all set.
So we're all off of that.
Yep.
Uh, the next one would be, who we call civil services, we are animal, ambulance building, animal welfare, civil, civil emergency, errands, resap, this bad, they might also bring in the, 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 into. These are, these are driven by, two major pieces here, driven particularly by, for the bottom, for the bottom legend, hopefully, game well there, show a couple, as well as resap. Think that that number is a good number, they have a, again, if that's.
How will we be doing on our ambulance building collection?
Uh, we're doing very good, we brought it back in May, I think, last year, folks. I made some outstanding, uh, ambulance building that went back years, that we were going to get last year, that, 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 staying on the bottom, kind of collecting. But we do have, do, have a hundred rules that we try to figure, we have a small amount that's outstanding for residents, so we do create that law. See, marketing, I think we're up to about, I want to say the 100, I don't know what I'm, I don't, we have a lot more urgency in this sort of base, of usual aid, our agents themselves, or transport, coverage, now, not quite sure how that's working all right now, in terms of, but I think going with it, mutual aid, and then there's a transport.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you may have had a little discussion on that.
We're way up on mutual aid.
Next would be miscellaneous, Warren's working over it, these are actually, you know, on the, on the annual, telling me, etc., Warren, but we all go together, as you're reviewing them. You can see social services, right now, I have 15, 95, and I, I've noted the areas within the asterisk, no question yet of those, those vendors, yeah, so that's still maybe moving, turns around after there. Both of them have been pretty consistent.
But you've got those, you've got those dollar figures added into your, that's part of the 15, 295, right?
I believe so, they pre-counted.
Oh, it's like, you've got it right there.
Um, the eastern trail now has not changed, it stays the same for $60,000. And we also would, we also add a 3,000 piece of trail maintenance that is used by public workers, for rail, being brought, fresh going, petting, and then the material brought in, so and so, that gives the, yeah, that, and then we have the library chamber.
Why are we going up on the library?
This is a misprint.
Yeah, 17,000, 1700.
Oh, oh, that's what we raised, I was looking at the 14,000.
Yeah, that was previous.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that number does, all of those all add up, you've got them all included. You've got them all included.
I do expect those both to be, if that first incident, the incident. Those three budgets together, uh. So one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah, for a long. Hey, whether I have the, uh, health assistance budget. Uh, this includes, uh. Salary package for the point eight health system. Could be a little misleading, but, uh, this, this point does. General assistants, nine, E nine one one four zero. She provides, uh, capital payables, uh, processing for us in the office. Uh, she takes care of secretary over administrative duties, uh, writing duties for the public works department.
She can cover payroll. She can cover payroll.
Uh, yeah, she.
Back up the payroll.
She also can.
The jack of all trades.
She can demand the, uh. Demand the counter as well. Uh, but it shows up here. Cause that, where she has an office. We haven't seen, uh, you know, either the expenses we had until the director, uh, welfare. Still at, you know, as of January eighteenth, where it's six thousand dollars a mission. It's kind of interesting that it's still holding, uh, hold our own there. There's quite a few programs out there that most, pardon, so probably the curves have to. Then those. Don't think of the scenes enough to, to, to pack. Some folks have moved into town and now have needed some aid, so instead of five, and so on and so. Maybe just there. Generally speaking, we don't have a, in plus. The whole set.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of, like, apartments and things like that, which, you know.
Nowadays, apartments are. Yeah, or more, yeah.
But I, you know, you probably, you're driving, that's a lot of people. So our rental, rental business. So I see the, uh, G A budget will go up, uh, you know, one hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Or a two thousand, or eighty dollars.
That's just wage, that's just wage adjustments.
Yep. Nothing's changed, I think, I'm getting, make that a question.
Yeah, make a motion eighteen oh one, tentatively approved.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I made a motion, she seconded.
Okay. We can, here you go, wait, now we're.
Eighteen oh one.
Eighteen oh one, have approval?
Yes, and I seconded that.
So motion made, seconded, have approval on eighteen oh one, any discussion? Favor?
Either we, fourteen series, are we all set with that? You foresee any changes on that? That's a great answer. Misleading, right?
And misleading, so.
Still, it's, it's still good.
The social services.
Still waiting for it to get back or something.
For the P S A.
Yeah.
P S A.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then your social service, let's say.
Alien, those social service pieces have really confirmed, you know, I put it in red. I thought I didn't want to, you know, generally I don't find that, so. I keep it up with any contact, but here is the question.
Yeah, I hear.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, we, we assume that, to me, for the budget, we'll assume that they contact you, and if they do, and they want more, it's like, no, we'll give it this much. That's it. They haven't been back since.
They haven't lived that down yet.
Yeah, I had to keep with, uh, who knows, we started meeting today with the partner, I mean, that's such a thing.
It is? No kidding?
It's still, it's still, uh, it's still outstanding, do you have a warrant?
Yeah, yeah.
That was something else.
I think we're. When the new girl.
It's okay with that, I, I'm trying to keep, uh, meetings every other week coinciding. The select was being, so maybe, uh, the second quarter funding to the line, so we'll do a little second. What's his name, that okay? Uh, continue to move on, uh. The only, the only logistic issue I'll have, I've got to be confirmed with R R G, when is available? If he doesn't work, we'll have to get rid of it sometime. I'll need the bill, I'm going to find you again. I'm commanding, we're talking, well, he's here, the fire probably already, but, but also the gap.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to be missing some Tuesdays, so I'd like to know when that one comes up, so. Tuesday is going to be a little tougher for me this year.
I still wait for, uh. The cell to give back me on some. Questions that we've asked them. We found that. Not related to the budget, we found that one of the trucks from the side of the building, so trying to figure out who he wants to own up with. Trying to figure out what did they have with it. Uh, we know we have one compact that's really rushing. Do you know that we have a king that's rushing? So we're, yeah, we.
Didn't we just? Can we just buy it?
We put the money in, we held off on buying it because the market's been crazy, and with during COVID, everybody owns the whole lot, so. That twenty thousand, we put it in, uh, actually, before last, obviously. Last year we did ask for it. And now we're, now we've got. Pick call back up there. Anyway, we'll get you those numbers too, uh, and we'll take that up for public works. The other thing that we're experiencing right now, we've got to be holding on to the container station now that we've gone to. Oh, I mean, through the tax dollar, that we're experiencing some light loads. That, what I mean about that, those, those containers are, are probably closer to. Ten to thirteen ton. And I'm looking at the billing, and we're at eight. Nine ton. So I think it may be a matter of ordination for them to pick out those and order them, and roll them over on. On, you know, those two days, so hopefully we can order in that, but twenty five yard containers cost us three fifty a haul. And fifty yards, uh, it's three hundred, don't tell me why it's small ones, we're both. So we'll try to get a handle on that a little bit, so we control that.
Do we have a capital reserve account for the transfer station? Would that be something?
Sound, but, but it's pretty well, I don't think.
But I'm just wondering, like, you know, where we put the money aside for that container, if we could have, like, you know. Kept it in the, like, a transfer station reserve rather than just let it collapse.
Right. Right, we did not do that. We, we didn't have the, uh. Critical authority, because it's, they created. That, but. Water, ready.
Yeah.
We did end up losing that money for, for. Trying to think of any else.
So we have, like. White apartment, public works, you know, we, we add them to, like, a five-year capital plan. That's something that maybe we need to do with the transfer station?
Yeah, I think that may be something we want to talk about. I mean, if you guys have equipment up there, that better handle the topic. Very not to talk about that, it, I think it behooves us to keep the old compact, my cans. Simply because at some point our relationship is settling, and we don't want to be in a position where. They own all the equipment and where they go, now we're scrambling to your, dude, so. Yeah, that stuff lasts a long time, if you're married about peens. But one's now reduction, so.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like in the past, maybe five years, we've either bought a new can or repaired kings. Seems to me this has come up pretty often.
And the compact or two. Is the building used for, for storage, more for the transfer, the town garage?
We have storage up there for, you know, public works, which is a bunch of equipment up there. Then we have storage for, um, all the weight. We get stored in the building, and then can sell it, it's waiting for so many of them to fall that way, so. So, and we have the trails all back, and we've been in the trail, I don't know what's in. They've been there a long, long time. A very old.
Well, I'm just like wondering too, like, the building repair, if we, you know, is that going to be needing some repairs within?
We do have those, you have those naked spots. Used it, uh, several kids that came down there. With the bear, who was the bear that? Um, so. Yeah, the buyer, I'll make sure that I, but I think I'll probably get, um. Public works to come in, give them that I can. That one takes time. And I probably also get recognition as well. Did, Jen, they heard. Those will be big items, you know, we'll get in that, we'll, so we'll talk about that. And you, you know, I can tell you what we've done, uh, for public works, we've got, uh, two payments left, um. Two pieces of improvement that we used purchase, that we all have here. So we, we have that coming up, we have a, um, contract on a ten wheeler. That needs to be replaced, that's going to be a sixty thousand, all right? Like I said, yeah, I can go from front of that, so he may have a better idea for us. I'll take that, he from there. Um, so we're getting, we've got a price on that. We also looking at possibly replacing one of our five fifties. Um, the truck is probably in the sixty thousand dollar range with the head here, another thirty six thousand. They weigh over a hundred thousand dollars, and replace the, where to use the. Staying stuff, right, yeah, five, so. So we think that.
We get a, uh, a copy of the capital reserve account, what's in those?
Yeah.
You had any, you got any gut feel on this move there, who else this year?
Gary, I mean, uh, we've been talking about it tonight. Higher eight percent. And I, I don't know what you guys even. Eight percent will, you know, that'll be. Four hundred thousand, hovering.
Where did I find that page?
Hopefully, you're a little bit more than you know.
I think the schools themselves have been told. You know, look at three, try to, try to keep it three, but there's more than just the individual schools, there's the facilities, there's a whole bunch of stuff we're trying to do, so. That's going to bump that up.
Yeah, I honestly go ahead, so voters have to go that. You don't, you don't have to give control of certain that.
Right now, it's five point eight increase. Projected to increase by three million, two sixty one, one seventy seven, which is a five point eight increase. Uh, and these expenditures would make it five point six three increase in total taxes raised in. Y twenty four.
So you could be looking at over three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Because, because the teacher contract negotiations going on too. I may not hit the share, I'm not that will hit the share, but.
Uh, Jeff, no.
That's good.
It's also one balance looking this year.
I have to look at lately.
That feels sound.
Uh, I, last time I did, we just completely got it, so. I did mark the taxes up today, trying to get a, you know, from her. As well, we're thinking about overall adjustments and values. She says, we see a lot of land splits right now, um, still a lot of construction. I threw out a number of fifteen, twenty million dollars. Jonathan, she didn't have an eye, and so. Get closer, we'll see if that's better number, go to Jen. What is going to happen?
No, just as a question, like, uh, I know when we do a revale, I know people get, like, hear that word, but. But it does bring the overall tax rate down, you know, because I know we, last time we were up like it. I can't remember fifteen or whatever percent, it dropped down to like nine, or something, you know, something like that. Um, which, I think, you know, they say what a third go up, a third go down, and about a third stay the same and everything. On the adjustments, does, does that affect the tax rates if you just do adjustments? You know, um, you know what I mean, cause.
You mean, uh.
You know, like.
Physical adjustments.
Right, yeah, because when you do a revale, at least the, the bill rate goes down. And that kind of helps everybody in a way, except, you know, granted, you do have something go up, but. Um, as far as your, your whole tax rate goes down.
Yeah, I, we're well, right now, we're well over seven, seven percent.
Right.
So I, I think we're in a position that. We have to go look at full. The iteration. You know. So all of the.
Okay, because as I'm saying, I know you see that, you look, you just have to look at the ads in the paper, and, and you see the sales. Compared to what we have assessments at, and it's like way up.
Way up.
Way, way up.
Yeah, I was, uh, I, we just said I'm on wells very. My problem with two, fifty, three, five, fifteen. And rain drop, so my, my taxes adjusted, but.
Right.
So I, I'm looking to put in, revale my money for this budget. Um, to get somebody to come in and. Yeah.
We, we may, I want to get a number, yeah. I want to have a, a number, and I've, I've talked to the vendors and said, you know, I don't want you to give me. A bare bonus number, I want you to give me a number, maybe twenty percent, you know. So when we present it to the people, I don't want to be in a position that we're, we're all, I can't, because. That, that would be exactly. That would be a disaster, yeah, for us. So, you know, I, I do respect to have a number and have people have more conversation on that, if you want to be. I, you know, I, I don't know where it goes, because, you know, my, uh. My wife's family has property in Cape Elizabeth and their, their tax gives equalization ratio is thirty percent. Um, and then they would read that out, so. They go on way below and say that's really been pushing them, but they're trying. I think you, if you make an effort to try to address that issue your whole day, so. In, in the event that, just for our sake, in the event that you folks want to get that number and say, hey, we're on the block. Certainly, certainly have that option, we can, we say, we're looking at it, considering that, we're trying to work through it, so.
I mean, as things normally pull out of the vent where you have to take the roles of vent, or else they can deal with, they give you the proposal, and you can evaluate it.
I think we're gonna say that in second statement, if you are active, you'll recommend the proposal that they're buying.
You want to see the potential of the vendor too, right?
And who do they have coming in to, to meet listeners, and building walkman, probably, that. Uh, then they generally will have, they probably take this home. Once they have gone with that, we'll have the opportunity to discuss any guy who's been. Assessing it very. They can change, so.
If that's the case, would it be to our advantage to? Get a couple of re-proposals and see what we're really looking at?
Well, yeah, but I, um, you've got my R and B just about done, but I can really try and hit number. From so many vendors that, you know, uh, billion grade old, those were resources, are another company, those two companies are pretty radical. I know people in most, those two companies that maybe will be, I mean, would say, but we got, we, we see the amount of cars that we have, we see the amount of people we have. Um, this is our value, what do you think this is gonna cost? Now, I, I part of the book, came on, came on board, they gave me some numbers and they were, pardon me. So, um, I have a pretty good rule, maybe leave with it, but not sure, so it's a really.
I mean, it, it does make sense to move forward with that, though, right? I mean, it, it, the values are not gonna go down. I mean, that seventy percent is just gonna keep going and it.
And it's, so you don't have to see guns draw, and there's more, right?
I mean, this is more harder than it gets. I don't think so.
Yeah. Uh, you know, they may draw ten percent maybe.
Yeah, it's not in the reason.
Yeah, I think so, we do. We're all experiencing that, I, I'm sure you all have stories about that, my daughter just bought a house in Virginia. Well, three better involved. One twenty six.
That's a deal. Yeah, one that she looked at here by clearly, it's like that soul, they, they did some, uh, some work on, uh, Elitch Field over there.
Yeah, that was up, six hundred.
Yeah.
plumber's house.
Huh?
Uh, Bushman's house, Earl Bushman's house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't pass away.
Yes, he did.
That's what. Yeah, I know, but. They know people die.
Especially if you buy a hundred year old, I would see that. Yeah. Now, didn't, uh.
So we'll need, uh, so, you know, it's, um, we're on, I'll get public works. Good public first print for recreation that we can experience. Yeah, and then that will leave us. Actually, uh, we're five five one nine five.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven?
Um, yeah.
Four, two mistakes, a twenty seven.
And who are you planning on doing then?
We'll do public works, transfer station, recreation. What do you know of your, uh? I'll throw fire.
I'll make it a point to be here. Yes, sir. Your turn.
Oh, what's your turn? I had a long day.
Yeah, a long night last night. Seconded.